I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Theresa, you want to call roll call?
Okay, Mayor Jones?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Monahan?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
And Madison in absent orders.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
And any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting for five of 2022. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion to approve the bills submitted for payment. To approve. Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Ron again.
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara? I can't say on yes. You used to do that. I stopped that there. All right, public comments, anything that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move to visitors, Mr. Mark Winter, representing the Hartford Legion. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, on behalf of the Hartford American Legion Post 118, I'd like to donate a check for $714.75, cover new bases and pitch a rubber out at the, or two of the fields out at the new Swenson Park.
Well, I will tell you, we appreciate that. We're going to get a pitcher quick. Where do we want to stand?
I'd say by the reference.
Do we want to stand?
This is maybe moved to be square, I believe.
Okay. Got it?
He'll take one for me.
My eye up on me.
Then I can put the, uh...
All right.
Can I have one of you go on the other side of our...
Sure. Karen? Watch your wallet.
The same smile.
All right.
Do it this way?
Hold it.
Right, one more. There we go.
Thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. One is it's only one word.
I would like to express appreciation for, uh, from the city for the commitment you made to put flight pools at the Veterans Memorial. That Veterans Memorial is not a Legion function. It never was. Mr. Kruger wanted to keep that separate from the Legion. However, he was one of our most loyal Legion members. And we really do appreciate your support for that. I've applied for a grant to complete the stonework and that's in works.
Good man.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We appreciate working with you guys. Thanks for the check, by the way. I like that. We don't have people come and give us checks very often. Usually the other way around. It's not to say that bad. I'm not, I don't think that. All right, we'll look down to applications, agreements, hearings. First up is review, approve the tax increment financing district number one project, plan and development agreement. Theresa?
Okay, so at the city council's last meeting, on the fifth, you know, we approved TIP district out on the east side of town. That's approving the area for the TIP. Now, the next step was to look over and approve the TIP's project plan, which is part of their development agreement. This went to planning and zoning last week for them to review. And now they have a recommendation for approval and it's coming before you guys to redo that as well. Tom is present to answer any questions you might have regarding the TIP. We've talked about this a few times, so as you know, they're applying for a 20-year TIP. It's for economic development. The developers are going to hold the loan, so basically it won't be in the city's name, so it doesn't go against our debt limits, you know. It's, but any taxes, you know, the difference in the assessment of taxes, we do not get our share. It comes to us, but then we pay that money to the developer to pay off the TIP loan. And so, you know, we'll be foregoing the increase in taxes to pay off this TIP. And it'll be used for the infrastructure going out for that development. Their first phase is planning to workforce housing and that they will start with that. And then they have subsequent phases in their development as well, so. Any specific questions?
One thing you might see in there, there's a mansion's a $1 million loan. So they're, um, they're actually going to get a bank loan for the 1 million portion of the infrastructure costs. They're going to pay as you go on the other 600,000, so that's why it's, the TIP itself is 1.6 million. Um, but when you see the reference in the development agreement and the plan of the 1 million, that's because that's the part that's going to be secured with financing by the developer.
600,000 is?
That they'll do a pay as you go with, that 600,000, so. Ultimately, the full 1.6 would be paid back to the developer. Um, the other thing they did put in here is they're going to waive the discretionary formula. So if you may recall, um, properties such as this can qualify for the discretionary tax formula of 20% in the first year, 40, 60, 80, until you get to 100%. They're agreeing to waive that, so that really speeds up the timeframe in which the TIP loan gets repaid as well. So they'll be paying full property taxes from year one versus waiting until the fifth year, the development, so.
All right.
I think the only other changes they agreed to reimburse the city for is legal engineering and administrative costs associated with the TIP. So it's a, really a cost, it's nothing to the city other than a deferral and when you get the taxes for the new, new construction out there.
They call that cost neutral, right?
As cost neutral as you can get, yes. Karen will have a few checks to write each year that she'll have to set up an account to, when the county pays those in, then she'll disperse them out to the, to the developer.
All right, anyone got any questions, comments, or motions? What guarantees that when you write that check that it finds its way to the bank? Is it cosigned? Is it, does it have, I mean, their good, their goodwill, their, their good name, their... What guarantees that that check finds its way to pay that debt?
I'm assuming their bank's going to take the agreement as collateral and they'll notify Karen that they want their name on the checks.
Perfect.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, the loan is tied to the agreement, just as it's written, so.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Do we have any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the TIP for district number one, project plan and development agreement.
Okay. And second. Any more discussion? There are none. We'll vote Monahan.
No.
Yes. Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
That passes. On to the next. Special event permit for the Miles for Murphy. That's the bowl is here, I'm assuming, to represent that?
Yeah, Joanne Bowl and representing the National Honor Society at West End High School and part of the mission of National Honor Society is to do community service projects. And we've done this now, I think, for the last eight years with the exception of Hope here. So we are asking for a permit to allow us to have a 5K here in Hartford. It would start and finish at the City Park, maybe April 30th, yeah, April 30th. Uh, roughly, the race itself goes from like nine to 10. It's pretty low-key. I think the most we've ever had is 50, usually around 30 participants. So, um, we probably set up about 8:30 to be done by 10:30, so it'd be less than a two hour event. I have all the manpower I need. I just need permission to permit.
All right. Any questions for Joanne or for any motions from the council?
It is, um, it's just a memorial, if anybody's interested. It's just a memorial donation. It's pretty low-key. There's a lot of t-shirts, something like that. It's not competitive. It's just a fun walk around to remember here and raise some money for his scholarship that goes towards a West End high school going into either counseling or education. And I have a few flyers. I left Theresa, if anybody would be interested.
Okay. Motion to approve the special event permit, Miles for Murphy?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. Would you know is, will the, like, the restrooms and everything be open by the 30th?
Yeah, yeah. There's actually one of them open right now.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be open tomorrow or Friday, so.
Good. Thank you so much. Yep, thank you everyone.
And if you need some paint, that's, you can just stop City Hall and it's all there.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, next on the agenda, block party, South Main for May 21st and August 13th. Not through and not part of it. Just those two days?
Yeah, just those days.
When I read that earlier, I thought that might be a good joke, so I'm not... Did it work?
It worked.
Yeah.
So, um, we were here every, every summer. Um, and we have some people that can make one date, but they can't make another. And so we decided to try to do two, um, if we're willing, if we are going to allow it to happen. Um, the only thing we need are block eights, the block of street. We put them up at seven. We take them down by 10. Emergency vehicles are able to get around if needed.
Greg, no problems?
Yeah, we're prepared.
All right, any discussions or motions from the council?
Make a motion to approve the South Main block party for May 21st and August 13th.
I'll second.
Second by O'Hara. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote Monahan.
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be down about June 17th.
Okay, I'm good. We'll be partying.
All right, second reading, ordinance 731. This is the amended zoning regulation. Theresa, anything to add?
Nope, there's been no changes since first reading. And this, um, basically, like I mentioned at our last meeting, it allows, um, any buildings within a commercial district or industrial district that share common walls, and we talked about like storage units or shop buildings, if they share a common wall, it allows the owner of that building to split on that common wall and sell off those various units. So instead of one owner owning the whole building, he'd be able to split it off and have several owners own it. Um, we allow this in our residential section, think of like a twin home or whatnot. We just didn't have any wording in the commercial side of it. It's gone through planning and zoning and the recommendation is to approve this.
And for, and we've had first reading, correct?
Yeah, first reading with us.
Motion to approve ordinance 731?
Second.
Any further discussion? Explain to me again how this has got to be, how this would have to go through planning and zoning before it was approved?
How it, how it needed to go through planning and zoning?
How it will need to go through planning and zoning?
It, it went through planning and zoning because any changes to our zoning...
No, not this. Say if somebody wanted to do the...
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, um, so really, I mean, this is what, the ordinance went through planning and zoning and they would have to meet the requirements of this ordinance in order to, um, you know, split on, on the common wall and the, to be able to split the property does not need to go through the planning and zoning board. They'd have to meet this ordinance, which is put in place by them, yes.
So I could split them?
That's your question, right?
So I could split them?
Do you have a common wall?
I do.
That totally separates it?
Yep.
You could.
But...
As long as you need to.
So it's retroactive, or does he have to come now and get it approved?
Well, when he, at the time just split it, when this becomes effective and he wants to split it, he could come and do that.
He'd have to pull a building permit?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
He'd have to, once again, replat it and, yeah, you'd have to go through all the actions necessary.
So why would you have to pull a building permit? Why would I?
Well, you wouldn't have to pull...
You just have to replat it?
You'd have to replat. And that all's got to come through the city, yes.
A replat would trigger this ordinance?
Right.
Being enforced?
Right.
Okay. So is this, anybody with an existing building is going to have to replat?
Their building's going to have to meet this requirement, going to have to have a common wall where you could separate.
They're going to have to come and have it.
And they have to replat, which would have to go through the city.
Yeah. But is that, but that's all they'd have to do would be a replat?
Right, yeah, yeah, you don't need a...
But if you have water and sewer service, in our conversations, you'd have to have separate services to each phase.
Yeah, you'd still have to follow, like we said last time, all the city regulations.
But what if you don't have water and sewer? You can replat?
You could still replat. I mean, just, the portion that doesn't have the services won't have the services.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need that.
If you wanted to each one, you would have to add that in.
So you don't, the water wouldn't trigger it, the sewer wouldn't trigger it. So you could just replat it?
And then you could sell off, you could. That's exactly what they do, like, like I said, with twin homes.
Would, um, what would trigger our building inspector to go out and ensure that the, the party wall is to code?
Well, that should be when the original building was put up.
But to speak to Mark's, Mark's concern is retroactive, right? Existing premises.
Right.
Somebody that, somebody that doesn't build, if, if you're going to do this and you're building with this intention, you build for that intention.
Right.
But I'm thinking as somebody that built 20 years ago, 25 years ago, and they think, you know, because it's, it's a lot easier to sell one storage unit than it is to sell 30. Just because you open yourself up to a lot bigger market, because one unit would be far cheaper than 30 units. So I'm just trying to wrap my brain around what it looks like if somebody has an existing storage structure with 10, 20 units in it to stop them from replating, no water, no sewer. Travis brings up a good point. I, I imagine the code is probably firewall on the, on the joining wall, which would, is what, 5/8 sheet rock?
It's a, is it a two or three hour firewall? It might be as much as two layers of rock on each side.
Is it? But I, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, moving forward, what, what gets that person in front of somebody that can say, "We don't like your plan"?
Right. Right.
That's, that's all I'm getting at.
So I think we'll have to do that in the office administratively, is when a replat comes through on an existing building, we'd have to send our building inspector out there to, to look at it.
But short, but short of the firewall, what grounds would you have to not approve replat?
Would there be a firewall though? If it's the...
Common wall? I don't know.
If it's, you know, residential, you know, like a, it's, it's not a living quarter.
It's not a living quarter, yeah.
So there probably isn't a firewall in the code.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how you put this, how you put this horseback in the barn if, if something goes upside down and nobody's yet to tell me how to do that other than turn it down and replat, which I don't know how you could justify turning it down just because city staff or the council or the building code guy don't like it.
I gotta believe firewall would be a consideration, residential or commercial. Going off my own experience, when I did a remodel, I had to get the current fire code, which included a, um, a three hour firewall in a commercial building.
Now, is that with the office space though?
Mm-hmm.
I'm saying that might trigger it there. Does this include storage and office?
We're talking about storage units though. We're talking about...
Well, it's kind of what we're talking about.
It doesn't matter.
That would start the conversation, the storage units. And then the planning and zoning added, commercial buildings like contractor shops, but they could have offices in them. I think in existing buildings, and Karen brought up a good point, is that if what plaque comes through on that, we'd have to send our building inspector out to make sure they're up to code.
So the storage units, me three quarter front inside your setbacks and, you know, all of those things. I mean, maybe, maybe to just put everybody's mind at ease, say this is a retroactive, no existing properties qualify. Would we have to go back to the beginning, rewrite this ordinance and then run it through first and second reading again? If we, if we...
I think that adds, I think that'd be a substantial change. We'd probably have to do that.
Right. I think there's commercial buildings in Hartford now that would easily qualify.
Well, I definitely think there are, and that is true.
For this firewall possibly or not, I mean...
The, the blue one on South Main looks like this would, it would fall right in line with this. But Kevin's toy storage, that's the one, because there's what, 20, you know, Craig, there are 20 units on the east?
20 on each side, yeah.
So 20 on each side, so when, when I think of the price tag on a 40 unit on that building, that's got to be, that's got to be at least, I don't even know, I guess half million of that. But one of those, it's a smaller market for a half million than it is for one unit. Because if you replatted that whole parcel and rolled every one of those out, there's no water, there's no sewer, I doubt there's electric.
But they wouldn't need, we don't require them to have water and sewer.
You're right. But all I'm saying is, is Kevin could replat that and make 40 parcels and sell them for 40,000 bucks a piece. That's all. And I, and I don't know, I don't know if I want to see this city go down that road.
And that's, that's the conversation, or that's the scenario that kind of started this conversation, because there was a gentleman that come to the city and wanted to do just that with storage units. He wanted to build storage units and instead of renting them off, he wanted to sell them off. Well, looking at current regulations, we don't allow that, you know, splitting at that common wall and plating off each one. So that started the conversations with the planning and zoning board.
I think, I think it's two different conversations. I think it's if somebody comes in and wants to build what they call a contractor shop and you move forward from the plans, because the city's got a lot more input on the front end with site plan, the, the building, whatever. I think, I think the city's going to hamstring themselves retroactively because Kevin's got a nice building. And I'm not, if Kevin could do it, you could do it with buildings that aren't as nice as Kevin's. Anybody could do it.
Well, then maybe it's something to go back before the planning and zoning board and, and see, yeah, should we make this, so it's not retroactive from...
It seems like, yeah, um, rather than maybe model this after an existing ordinance, they just tried to make our ordinance fit?
They modeled it after Brandon's ordinance.
Okay.
See, I actually dropped it.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation from our building inspector?
He was present with all the discussion on it. I guess, I don't know if he gave his recommendation on it, I don't remember what he said, but he was part of the discussion. Um, Brandon does this, so he says this would be allowed in Brandon.
If we revisit this with P and Z, do we look at a, a maximum unit capacity? And is that...
A maximum basement that you could replat?
Yeah, say there's 10 units in a building, there are eight units in a building, something like that. Our intention is the contractor shops, the toy, you know, the man cave kind of a thing where you've got a 20 by 50 storage unit, you can put your boat in there and it's got a bathroom and, and that, that's really where the conversation went.
Sure.
And then, I, I agree with you, Mark, that then you get into storage in buildings where you've got 40, 80 units in a complex, you start selling that off one at a time. That wasn't ever our intention to go down that route. But I, I agree with you.
But if you open that, but if you open that door, you can't stop somebody from walking through it.
But I mean, listening to your conversation, I agree with that, but, you know, from a city council standpoint, does it, does it make sense to limit the number of units? I mean, does that, does that resolve our concern?
What's the downside if people want to own a storage unit that's 10 by 20? And go through all this hassle?
I don't see that. We have storage units in Sioux Falls that we own and I don't see that being very desirable from an ownership standpoint.
I agree with you. Yeah, I mean, if we allow it, what's the negative impact? Could you get a bank even financing? Or, you know?
You eventually, or that's a purpose you're running with.
I, I think if you put even some wording in here that says it, that it has to have its own sewer water and electric service.
Then you catch the contractor shop, the toy shop, and then the man cave and the thing.
And you, and you throw out the storage units. Because they don't, they're not going to qualify as huge, they've invested a tremendous amount of...
And the retroactive piece turns into a huge cost as well.
Right. So I'm gathering that there's a more of an appetite to send this back, have this re-looked at? Well, I, I'd even entertain just postponing a vote on it, tabling it until our next meeting. Just, just for some clarifications, make sure we run through those scenarios, because, I mean, this, this conversation came up two weeks ago. Yeah, and this is another, this is another example of one guy. Right. One person brought this up. And we've talked about it for two meetings. Planning and zoning's talked about it for how many meetings?
More than that.
More than that?
Yeah.
I think it's the right thing for the community. I think it's the right thing in the right application. Yeah, and I, I just don't want to see the city throw caution to the wind, because, like I said, once, once you open the door, there's no, there's no, there's no foot horseback in the barn, so.
So Travis, with the separate water and sewer to each unit, that was discussed at one of our conversations.
Sure.
Uh, the contractor that was looking at doing this, it would be quite expensive for them to bring it in because they'd have to have an actual sewer, and they'd have to, you know, study down the whole length of the building. That would have to be city standards. And then each year would have to have its own service line going to it, its own meter and everything like that. And just the cost with that involved wasn't appealing to them.
So that was, that was a refurb, so to speak, not a new construction?
That was a new construction.
That was a new construction.
Yeah. That's where this all got started, but it was...
Right. Because the guy that came and asked was looking to build a new...
Right, right, exactly. That's, yeah, that's a sort of a conversation.
They thought it'd be better if they brought just one water and sewer into the, like, one main area and then they handle, you know, like, after that, they're quite open to it.
Which isn't so different than the townhouse.
Yep. And there, there are different ways of running them, but...
Right. So if you have an HOA for this contractor shop, I, I still think we're, we're, we've got two distinct conversations here.
Yeah.
One is the refurbishing and selling off existing storage units. And the other is making this ordinance applicable to new contractor shops.
Right.
And so I think we probably hit the contractor shops the way this is written. But to put everyone's mind at ease, I would confirm, you know, what keeps that for the unit, storage unit, from becoming...
You could almost do a size, that it has to be a certain size in order to be considered this.
And then you start, then you start tearing out walls. You know, I mean, that's, you almost have to specifically exclude something to, to satisfy that concern. Tom, could it, could it be drafted in a way that you had two ordinances or two paragraphs or sub paragraphs picked up with both new construction and existing structure?
Yeah, I mean, yes, you could, you could write your ordinance to do that.
Maybe that'd be the easiest way moving forward, just have a section for new construction.
Built after...
Built, built after this ordinance is planned.
After this is a fact.
And then you word it how you want it. It's got to be planted, you know, you can speak to the water, the sewer, whatever. And then you can have a section for existing structures prior to this that were quote unquote considered... And then you can have a section for existing structures prior to this that were quote unquote considered. Of storage unit complex that was replatted, I don't know.
About just the one sewer service, one water service, you know, if the HOA owns the, those utilities essentially in the ground that the building sits on. You can submeter that water.
And they take care of that themselves.
Right, or that's all, the HOA pays the water bill, they charge the individual tennis.
If you're gonna split it up that way, I wouldn't even address the existing buildings, let, until that comes forward, then you got time to.
Until, until one day.
Yeah, but I mean, it might not, might not happen, trying to, you know, just, it might not ever happen, you know? Or you've got time to work on it and think about it, you know?
Oh, it'll happen, I'll do it just for fun. Just to make Tom drive, drive the ordinance.
Okay, how do we want to do this? We got a, we had a motion to the second, on second reading of seven thirty-one, what do we want to do? Do we have to rescind that motion if we're not gonna vote on it, or how's that work?
It was a substitute motion.
I thought we made a motion, yeah.
We did.
We did.
We had a motion to a second.
We'll mount a second.
Come on, second.
And then discussion is part of it.
Yeah.
Really, the only issue here is.
Existing.
Existing.
Well, that's, that's the only issue I have is existing.
Right, and why is that? What's the concern?
Can't put my finger on it. I just don't like it.
Let's see if we talk over.
Brenneman said call the vote? Let's vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
All right.
Who goes to work on, on the, making sure that this doesn't, it's not able to be applied to existing storage units?
I think it can be applied.
Future storage units, if they meet a bunch criteria.
Right, they can apply to future, meet all the criteria. I think if an existing building comes in, I like your suggestion that we, we'll send Paul Clark out or Kyle when he's ready and, and ensure that they do have a common wall that, that meets building codes anyway. Cause otherwise, there's no reason why they couldn't.
Can, can we get Paul Clark's, like, two cents on that or his thoughts for our next meetings for our review? Just for our consideration, all right?
Sure, yeah, Paul.
We'll move forward, the second reading ordinance seven thirty-two, rezone of north six hundred and eighty-six feet. Of the two B flat attract two Maple Pass addition from agriculture to residential. Anything to add, Teresa?
Nope, this hasn't changed at all, and this is, you know, the, the newly, new Tiff district, this would be the north portion of it where they would start phase one of their development. Um, it came in as a, so this is rezoning it to residential.
All right. Motion to approve ordinance seven thirty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion or any discussion? No, oh, oh, Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Through those, those Hartford area fire and rescue report. Looks like, uh, Matt Horn, James Bus.
Yes, I'm Matt Horn tonight.
How are you?
James Bus here for Hartford area fire and rescue. Um, total calls for March were thirty-two calls, fifteen of them were in the city of Hartford. Our training was for EMS, was behavioral emergencies. I can tell that, um, and the fire was first do engine tactics. I can fix that. So, and then future training is gonna be weather spotter training and disaster preparedness training. And we've got the pancake coming on May fifteenth.
All right. Uh, I don't know if you know, James, calls the year, how we looking according to last year, up, down?
I think we're up, I don't know by how much.
Yeah.
I don't know what the last, I've been kinda out of commission for the last three months, so I haven't looked at the totals yet.
Okay, this year.
Matt gave me these numbers, so I don't know if I went in all.
Said, come and talk.
So I'll have to play catch up here, next up.
No, I know, I didn't need to put you on the spot, I just thought.
We got a lot of three call days, although I've, I've had my radio on yet, this, this was real big, I think, so we've got a lot of structure fires in the last six months.
Yeah.
We didn't, you know, do that lately?
No, it doesn't. Hasn't been too bad, but yeah, we probably needed some more red flag days than what we have, so. But otherwise, we haven't had enough in due nature.
All right, any questions for James? All right, thank you, sir. Chamber and economic development directors report, Amy Farr.
Thank you, um, my report is in the packet, one update to the chamber side is, um, yesterday we announced our four individuals that won the Easter coloring contest. Um, we did not use names since they're children, um, but all have been notified they will be picking up their prize winnings on Friday. So it's posted on our Facebook page, if you'd like to look at those little coloring pages, you're certainly welcome to. Um, still working on Discover Hartford, getting ready for that, um, got a lot of things in the hopper for that one, um, the development foundation, a couple of updates. We are still currently working on the community guide, we're gonna shift gears on how it previously looked, we're gonna make it more informational for when people move to this area so it can be utilized as a relocation guide. But also be handy for the residents that live here, so we're working on that. Um, and then I attended, um, the Girl Smarter Conference for SMGA with a board member from the HIDF and then Mayor Jones attended as well. And then I attended the governor's office of economic development conference, that too was attended, well, um, got some great information coming out of those. Um, and then working on, um, upcoming, um, meetings with developers and, um, construction individuals.
Um, I've been having a discussion with Amy regarding our, uh, Hartford master plan, which we have now received a copy from ISG. I'm going to be working with Amy and Teresa, we'll probably be putting out an invite to certain entities in Hartford to have them come. Uh, I just wanna make sure we got everybody on the same page now that we spent the money on the, uh, plan, that we all are on the, on the right track or on the same track. Everybody seems to think I'm not crazy by asking, so I, we're gonna move forward and do that. So that'll be in the next, uh, week or two and get everybody together, probably ten to fifteen people and kinda look through the plan. I just wanna make sure that everybody, those entities have a chance to take a look before we, as we're moving forward. All right? Um, I'll just add a couple of things to, uh, what Amy said about the Girl Smarter, Girl Smart Conference. Very, I mean, they had some really good speakers, but I will tell you, probably one of the best, and unfortunately he was last and no, hardly anybody stayed, was Troy Larson with, uh, Lewis and Clark. Man, he should have been first on the program, because, uh, he shared some information that if you're a town trying to grow, you should be scared. Cause this water deal is gonna, is gonna get critical, I'm afraid. We haven't, and the way he said it was really, if you, when he said it, I thought, well, that doesn't make much sense. But when you think about it, he said, our problem is not that we don't have enough water, we're letting too much of it get past us. That was his point, and when you think about it that way, you think, huh, kinda makes sense, they're doubling their capacity coming out of the river. So, um, just, I thought it was, I thought it was well. I may, as we move forward here the next month or two, one and a half, Troy just comes on night and maybe give his presentation to the council, I think that'd be really helpful. So, anyway. Uh, then the GOED, GOED, I went for just one speaker. Part of what we're gonna do with this meeting, this guy that talked, talked about finding people in your community that think outside the box. And we have a few, we just gotta find them and get them pointed in the right direction. So that's gonna be part of our discussion process. This guy really worked on, I won't call it artistic, but out of the box artistic projects that just really exploded the downtown areas in some of these communities, it was crazy.
It brought people to their communities to see the items.
So, really liked that, small communities, some of them really small communities, and I thought, I think we could maybe do some of that stuff. So anyway, that's it, anything else Amy to add, or anybody got questions for us? Amy? All right, thank you. City engineer report?
Good evening, everyone, uh, review of Platte and Washington Meadows and the Getting Go-Rating Plan is provided by the final comment of those. Um, not too much going on with the developments, um, I've not heard a specific timeline on, uh, the Vance Peterson stuff, I know it's coming up, they said sometime in May, so I'll, I'll check back on that. Um, sixth in the month, uh, so looking for that time to schedule that pre-construction meeting of Jeff Zacharias has been working to schedule his subs and get their schedules so we can, you know, get the products that are going. Um, and then additionally, we are working on a project website, uh, as well as flyers to put on residents' doors, um, to keep them informed of the project. And working with Teresa to get that link, um, added to the six website. Uh, Amy said the community development plan is wrapped up after our open house on April sixth. And additionally, we did hear, uh, ARPA funding was announced, uh, for the wastewater reclamation facility. Uh, of the sixteen point seven, uh, sixteen point seven million dollars we estimated, uh, fifty percent of that is being funded through a grant. Um, then another one point two is the, to the city ARPA funds plus the match from the state. Um, so the total loan award amount is just under seven point two million, and that's a thirty-year loan, um, at two point one two five percent. And then jumping back to the water tower painting, we did, bid that last Thursday, um, had seven bidders, um, and McGuire Iron out of Sioux Falls was the low bidder. Um, the, our recommendation letter is attached, and we do recommend going with, um, uh, to, uh, alternate two. Um, and so what that was is, um, it swapped out the interior coating we had specified in the base bid, uh, for the, for a poly grid, it's, it's a thicker heat applied, it's what rural water uses and that really recommends. Um, and then the exterior coat is a, um, it's a tenebec hydrophon coating, which doesn't mean too much to me, doesn't mean much to you. Um, but it has a twenty-five year, twenty-five plus year life, um, as opposed to a standard epoxy coat, which is a fifteen to twenty-year life. Um, and if you look at the base bid, uh, cost per year versus the alternate two cost per year, uh, the base bid cost per year is twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, and the, uh, alternate two is eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Looking to.
And I happen to be down here that day, we need a motion to accept that bid, is that correct?
Motion to accept the, um, water tower repaint, bid with alternate two as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
What was the, uh, what was the estimate?
The estimate, estimate, yeah, the estimate we received from the wire was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, I mean, the, you, the, the bid stack, what was the estimate on the bid stack?
That was three hundred and twenty-five.
That's what it was.
Yeah, so we got.
So it came in.
It did come in, yeah, even with the more expensive interior.
Yeah. All right, any more questions or discussion on that? If not, we'll go with O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Now we pass it. I just wanted to add, I happen to be down here the day they were opening the bid and we talked some about painting, because coming up in the agenda, we're gonna talk about rebranding. It is quoted right now with just block Hartford letters, so, uh, depending on what we do with rebranding, if that's something we wanna do, we can still. Probably get an additional court or matter when we get to that point.
So, question, cause they're gonna, they'll be working on the inside of the tower?
Oh, inside.
Yeah, so, I'd, just out of curiosity, how do they do that? Do we just drain them, draw the water tower down and then drain it and then just run off the rural water?
Yeah, we can run off rural waters pressure, so.
Just on the main line?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that work so good?
Yeah.
That's what I figured, I was just curious.
And they have a timeframe from, I think it's like May or something like that till September, October, but they only got a short span, once they start, they have to get it done. They can't draw it out all summer, so only, I think it's two or three weeks, the span it is?
I think it's, I think it's actually eight weeks, just based on.
Eight weeks, I love, okay.
To run off the rural water drain line?
No, that's, that's just for the entire recoat process.
The entire process.
So the interior, I, I guess I don't want to walk the interior text, but it will not be the full eight, eight weeks.
But it will have the tower empty that whole time, because it allows you moisture from your sweating.
Condensation, yeah, yeah. All right. Um, second one you had on there was review approved, the contract for bike path design, that's also in our packet. Anything you need to add there, or?
That's just what you requested, uh, the last meeting, uh, it does mirror the fee that was outlined in the grant application, so no change there.
All right.
I don't want to use keep spending. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No, oh, oh, Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, you got anything else for us?
No, I don't, thank you.
I, I got one question for Teresa or Karen, as far as the wastewater treatment, so it goes. Let me get up here to the numbers. So the SRF loan, seven million one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. In the event the sixteen million seven is low, what's the, what's the process for increasing the SRF?
So say you go out to bids and they, they all come in way higher than that, whatnot, depending on how we do it. I mean, city will have to probably loan to make the difference or.
So you can't expand?
You can't expand the SRF.
This is set.
So the SRF loan is what it is?
Yes, yes.
So then if bid comes in higher than sixteen seven sixty-two, cause all this financing will be locked in. So anything above and beyond that will have to be borrowed or bonded.
Right.
In a.
Now, depending on the timing of the project, you maybe can apply for a second SRF loan for the difference in the increase and go through that process again.
But you wouldn't know that until.
But you wouldn't know that till.
For the assessments of the bid.
How much do you figure we're gonna have to borrow?
Um, well, actually this, you know, ISG came up with an estimate of what, fourteen point five or something like that?
Something like that.
So I wasn't real comfortable with that, just cause of the price increases that has gone off. We upped the amount of our ask to this sixteen seven, cause I was hoping to cover some, you know, fluctuation of market.
Your initial estimate all in is fourteen and change, fourteen five?
Something like that, fourteen seven, forty-five, fourteen seven, something like that.
We had our, I think our standard, uh, ten percent contingency that we do on our estimates, and then just to, yeah, believe we had another ten or twenty percent?
Yeah, so we, we kind of tried to have had, just to, like, the fluctuation market, I agree with you, I don't know what it's gonna be when we bid this out either, so I was hoping to have some of that cost.
Right, but they have eight million dollar grant, they're getting, that's just a grant.
That's just a grant, we don't have to pay them that back.
Expecting that, were we?
Nope, no, that, that was a very good grant.
That's what I, I'm trying to go like.
Not the normal grant you get.
We were expecting to spend fourteen million and now we're probably gonna be seven million.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we were hoping to get some grant funds, this ARPA money really, we're applying for the exact, the perfect time, because they have all this extra money and, yeah. Usually you don't get fifty percent of your.
Yeah, I, I wish we would have this conversation about extra money when I did my taxes. I can tell you where the extra money came from, so.
Thank you.
I didn't pay in enough, so.
Yeah, yeah, the part that the public needs to know is, rather than a seventy-five or seventy-nine dollar a month.
Surcharge.
Surcharge is now. Surcharge is now gonna be about twenty-nine dollars a month.
Twenty-six, that's what they're kinda looking at. Yeah, so if we wouldn't have got the grants in there, we would have to fund the whole amount, yeah, it's gonna be like seventy-five, seventy. We figured what the surcharge, that's right off the top that would go on every water and sewer bill is the surcharge to pay this loan. But since we got this grant money, now we're down, we're down to twenty-six dollars a month, which I think will be a lot more palatable to the public than.
Right. We put a billboard out there by that says wastewater treatment for sale, you know, who knows what we could do?
There you go.
You better wait till you hit your bids and.
Yeah, we better wait to see, yeah. So, so no, this was a very good, we, we got a good grant amount and, like I said, our ARPA funds, they matched it one to one, so that was just extra money there too, that, that's all granted. We don't have to be back at all, so.
That come from the state?
Hmm?
That come from the state?
Yeah.
I know where that came from too.
Yeah, so, so no, it was, it was very good.
Alright.
For the city.
Anything else on that? If not, Craig, let's have the magic words of wisdom.
Well, I'm just gonna add a couple things, I guess, changes in my report. You're talking about Troy Larson and rural water and stuff. I met with Ryan Allen here the other day when we were at that board meeting. Sat down, lunch, and talked. Ryan Allen's superintendent for many out of rural water, and we were talking about the allocations and their expansion that they're gonna be doing, and just for the heck of it, I said, you know, if we, you know, we're sitting pretty, pretty good right now Hartford district allocation, what we got. And I said, but what if we'd wanna jump up of five hundred thousand or a million gallons a day, what would it cost? He said, right now, he said, for a million gallons per day, you're looking at two, or twenty million dollar investment. So, we think wastewater is expensive, why? Huge, so.
Twenty million dollar investment as far as infrastructure?
Yeah, just to get, this is, just to get the allocation up to another million gallons, so. So we're, we're sitting good. We're sitting at right now about two point two that we are allocated a day, so we're sitting in pretty good shape, yeah, but.
We're using how much of that?
On a, a good hot, dry summer day with all the sprinklers going, we're using about six hundred thousand.
And if we have some restrictions in place?
Yeah, during a, some normal summer, or during like winter months, we're only using about a hundred and seventy to one eighty thousand gallons a day.
Okay.
So we're, we're sitting pretty good, yeah.
Okay.
And in the summertime, like I said, we don't put restrictions on it, we just figure let them pay for it, you know. That was just a little tidbit.
Services and business.
Parks that the, one of the bathrooms is open, and the other one's gonna be open either tomorrow or Friday, so they'll both be open ready to be used. You can get flag pulls up today and flags are on them, so they might're up. Weather sirens, we are having little issues with, they're supposed to have it preset to our frequency. We can't get it to go off, so I got two-way radio scheduled to come out and hook up their radio stuff to it, get it programmed, so. The federal, when I talked to them, they said that you can have it preset from the factory, but it's not gonna be guaranteed it's gonna be right, so. So we will have to way out. We've had to have them out before, um, to get them set, so hopefully by either the end of this week or first part of next week, that'll be up and running, so.
It's manufactured in the United States?
Yeah. I believe so, so, federal signal.
Right, right. Oh, sure.
Alright.
Along with that, I got a quote for Maywater. The quote was three cents higher per gallon than I figured that budget. Bumble Gibson is who I, I don't have the number. We've had them do it for years for us, they've. And now, two hundred. Wait, can I tell next meeting? Shoot, so I gotta add. Okay, I'll get it out of the agenda for next, we'll be okay with that, so.
Alright.
I see it was on the agenda, but I thought, well, that sense of my report doesn't be okay. Been a busy week, so that's all I got, assuming you have anything for me.
Any questions?
I got a question for Craig and maybe Tom. Noticed on the west side of Western, some people have been modifying drainage in multiple locations.
I've heard about that.
And that drains to Turtle Creek, which then drains into town. What's the dues and benefits of that?
As the floodman is, floodplain administrator, when I forgot about it, they got a letter on it. You're not, you're not supposed to be working in the floodway without getting a permit, notified on the that. They came in soon as they got the letter. I told them they have to stop all work and that they have to hire an engineer to certify that they have, basically certified, there's no rise to the floodplain, that they haven't changed anything in that, so. Actually, yesterday I got contacted by their engineer to hire. They are working on getting that paperwork to me, so.
They meaning one location?
Oh, the, his whole property.
North of there, they're doing some stuff too.
Okay, so that's not in the floodplain?
That's not in the floodplain, okay.
It's just the creek, yes. That is just drainage, yeah, there. Yeah, cause I saw that as well, but that is not in the floodplain. North, north of those houses, like more towards thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gene Benson's old.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that too.
Well, it's obviously the ones too. It is, but then I noticed, just, I drive by there morning, and he's got some dirt that now piled up.
I think it's just drainage and.
Two.
He added on to his culvert.
I know.
Yeah.
I had the pleasure of watching him unload it. And I watched it fall off the bed of the truck and into the other side of the ditch. It was hard. I had to stop because they were doing that, and so it was kind of entertaining, but. Well, you ever see a culvert fall off a, somewhere? Yeah, yeah, they, they roll. Yeah, they did, great, the other ditch, a truck driver goes. Gets in a struggle.
Did you find a truck yet, Craig?
No, I haven't, no.
What's your budget again?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay.
I just wanted to hear you say it one more time.
We're gonna find one.
You might need to add another ten on to that.
We're gonna find one.
Alright, how old are you gonna go?
Got some standards yet.
Alright, anything else for Craig? Not, we'll move forward. What did you call her earlier? Finance, Mrs.?
Madam Finance Officer.
Officer.
I shouldn't have wrote that down, I didn't remember that.
Okay, first council attendance is in the report. If you wanna check that over to make sure that I'm not missing any of your meeting pay, I'll be doing payroll next week for you guys. Otherwise, nothing really to add, I just have a couple action items. Our auditors have completed our annual report, so a copy of that is included. So I'll need approval on that, and then the other item is finance officer school in June. The registration's seventy-five, and it's seventy-five dollars per night, and I'd stay two nights, and it's in Huron this year, so I'd like approval to attend that as well.
Alright, we're still in one of the time. Anybody got a motion for the approval of the audit?
Some moved.
Any further discussion on that? Karen, none, we'll vote O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Montague?
Yeah.
Second item on Karen's request to go to the finance officer school. Do we have a motion on that one?
Want you to approve?
Standing.
Any discussion on that item?
Are you speaking? I mean, you're an old man, but you're good at this.
Learning more, hopefully.
Alright, no further discussion, we'll vote. Montague?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Anything else, Karen?
No, that was it.
Alright. Theresa, what do you have to add here?
Just wanna point out a couple of things in my report. The industrial sewer project along Western. It sounds like either next week or the first week in May, I think that's still on track, that they will be on Oak Street, so that will be shut down some. They, we are putting in, you know, temporary access at least over to the buildings and ATS, but they will have, they will be working on Oak, so just, you know, if some of the businesses comment on that, we're coordinating that. And then ISG, we do have in the budget for ISG to start doing some preliminary design work on the Western Road Project, or, you know, in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna do that expansion. They're gonna need some preliminary design, so we can start working with the state on that. And then we also have in the budget we put in this year for them to start to do the design work for, we're gonna plan on extending our water main down Highway thirty-eight to the east. That's part of our CIP. Both those things are in the budget, and so if it's the consensus of the board, I'd like them to bring contracts maybe to our next meeting, so those can be reviewed.
Is that water main? No way that could be conjunction with our sewer main, I suppose.
Well, no, I guess we wanna put it off to that.
I don't know if you, you might get a little bit of benefit out of it, but, cause there won't be, you know, contractors, but I think both projects are big enough and still good.
Cause I think, I think that water main's extension is almost a mile?
Yeah, you just go all the way from.
It's from Colton Road.
Colton Road, yeah.
Down to thirty-eight, and then eight hundred feet past east of the intersection of Mickelson?
Yeah, plan is to bring it past up to where Assis, so when he comes in, he will have to do the boring and hook up to it, so. That way, that way we have it.
It's on the north side, so that'll give water.
Yeah, he'll have to hook up to us.
Sure, yeah, yeah, okay.
So if everybody's good with that, I will have them bringing contracts for review and to, at the next meeting, have a look at that.
Any issues with that? Karen, none wants to do that?
Okay, I also wanna point out, I put in my report, you know, last meeting we talked about possibly doing, Ryan Overden brought, he wanted to do a land swap there. After talking a little bit with ISG and the bike trail project, I, we wanna put that on hold for a minute just because we're not exactly sure how we're gonna work the path through there. We need to talk to some property owners to the north, it might have to go to the south. Until we get it worked out where we're gonna put that path, I think we should just hold tight to, to what we have yet before we. And I called Ryan, he, he's perfectly fine with that, he's in no rush. He said he just thought he'd bring it up at this time, because he thought about it with the bike trail project, so. Like I said, I think we'll just, he, he does have a proposal, and we're just gonna sit tight on it until we, we know the design of the bike trail, so. Midco, yesterday morning, had a pre-construction meeting as far as getting their project started. Jesse, our Jesse O came, went out and tended that. Sounds like they're gonna start next week already, so might hear some scuttle about that. From what I understand, they're gonna kind of start on the east side, kind of Assis Development, kind of work east and then north a little bit, and till they blanket the town. Sounds like they might have two or three crews out here at, at any given time, so.
They're hoping to do about sixteen hundred feet a day of boring, so it's gonna be locate tickets after locate tickets to.
Speaking, speaking of Midco, what's the status with the, are they calling vaults? Are they gonna be above ground vaults or underground?
There's, there's a few that are gonna be above ground, I can't remember the number, if it's like nineteen or something like that, there's gonna be some of the bigger ones where they got the main connections at. Majority of them are gonna be just like what you see right now with Golden West here, the flat flush with the ground.
What's the thing you can't see?
Well, they put above ground one in my easement. Probably gonna get hit with a molar. Multiple times.
That's on public record.
That's fine. I got a couple older, and I got headlights, man, I'm just out there molar. I can't be held responsible.
Yeah, so what kind of be, we'll have somebody kind of, everybody do locate, just kind of see what's gonna be there, so if you see a problem with it, they said they dress them and they.
Even if it's only nineteen, you're gonna have nineteen complaints. You really are.
Yeah, that's with any.
Depending on location, but I, I mean, if it's residential, and they're nineteen above ground big boxes, you're gonna have nineteen complaints.
Oh, yeah.
So.
The nice thing is, we just turn it right over to the Midco guys and say, do you know what that certain project?
Everybody tell them, oh, it's Midco, there's gonna be all complaints. We read Hartford that.
Yeah.
I actually don't.
Don't start. Alright, Theresa, anything else on that?
Can I just update the Summit Pipeline? We did get party status, so we'll keep on top of that project as it goes through its process there.
So what was their deal, the day of the party status decision, they changed the route or something?
They did change.
Alternate route?
They did change the route that, from, they didn't change the route that day. From the original route, they did change it, cause it was gonna go down, pretty much follow Dakota Access Pipeline.
Right.
But then when it hit Hartford, we're one of the alternate routes that they've changed. They, they came closer, closer west to, or closer to our west edge. And they changed it probably in about four different spots, they changed it, and I don't know the reasoning behind that. I don't know if they couldn't get easements or access, they'll do, kind of going around some certain properties, but that's what got it closer to our border, so.
Is there any economic development advantage to having that closer to Hartford, either to sell carbon dioxide to a potential business or a potential, potential business?
I'll work on that for you.
Tie into it and join that. I'm still not supportive, I'm just trying to figure out their logic.
Right.
I get, I, that's it, I have no idea why they changed it, my.
The reaction of our economic development director was priceless. Wish that was on camera.
Alright, and, Theresa, you have one more, you have an action item also for?
I do, so in conjunction kind of with the finance officer school, they have human resource school that day before that I would like to attend, so I'd be going to that the day before in Huron, and Karen would be then come the next day for the finance officer's school, and I'd be coming back. My registration's fifty dollars, and it's still seventy-five for the room.
Want you to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Theresa, if you read an employee suggests that we have a third party to our HR, because if they have an issue with you, who do they talk to?
The mayor.
They go to the mayor?
Yeah.
Point taken, alright.
It's in our personnel, it's in our personnel.
I look like a third party.
I have knowledge in HR.
Yes.
They also have the option to talk with the city attorney.
Perfect, alright.
Alright. Okay, any other questions on that?
Nope.
If not, we'll vote, Montague? Yes, Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Anything else? Oh, I seen on your report, and I'll just mention that if any of my, any of the council members have any recommendations for a P and Z member, I have not had a chance to talk with Tony. Steven, I'll tell you, he resigned, and we'll need to fill that spot. So if anybody has any recommendations, please just give me a call or shoot me a text. Alright. New business, it looks like.
Want you to approve, yeah. Say?
Any discussion? This is the AS application number two on our sewer project going door.
Are we getting any updates? I know John was here that one meeting.
I have two things to say. I, I said, do we have any more of it? Cause I only got the one update. About two days later, he sent me another one, so we have two up on the website now. Trying to get project updates for the public, yeah.
Any more discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Montague?
Yeah.
Alright, also in the packet, next item is discuss, review, marketing proposals.
Okay, so like I mentioned at the last meeting, I did sit down and talk with three different marketing firms. I got some recommendations from Amy, Lawrence and Schiller, Caliber Creative, and Ken Schultz. Basically told them, you know, we had budgeted some money to do some rebranding, so I thought the first step in that is maybe look at a new logo, possibly a new tagline. I mentioned that just me, I see that it would be nice to work with like the Chamber, the HADF in conjunction to get maybe something that's kind of got unison. like the Chamber, the HADF, in conjunction to get maybe something that's kind of got unison, you know, each have a different logos, but, you know, be cohesive in that way. Each one of them submitted a proposal, which are in your packet, that would basically do just that, um, they all had pretty much the same approach, they would, uh, put together, um, some focus groups of some key players, kind of get their input of what they like, what they don't like, they would work up a a handful of logos for us to look at, um, get inputs from there, um, then once a logo and or tagline, we can add one or we don't have to, it's up to us, um, is added, they would then put together basically a booklet, um, send us the logo in different formats, because you use different formats and different applications, whether you're putting a logo on the wall, or if you're putting it on the truck, or you're using it for letterhead, it's, it's different applications. We would get all those different logo designs, and then we'd basically get a booklet or, um, a CD that would just tell us how to use each different format and what to use it for, so that would be kind of, that's the gist of the proposal from each one of them. Obviously, you know, you can take marketing a lot further, you can do media campaigns, you can, you know, do something with your website, that would probably, in my thoughts, as a phase two, you know, maybe we look at that at budget time to budget for next year, because I think doing this proposal, converting everything over with a new logo will probably beat up our fifty thousand dollar budget, so. So, I don't know if you've looked through them, if you, um, if there's examples in there, I truly think all three of these can do a good job, um, you know, I, like I said, I don't know if I've looked through them, seeing kind of examples, if you have a personal preference, um, each one of them did say that if we would like them to come and kind of do a presentation on what they would do, or what they do do, they would, um, I'm gonna leave that to discussion to you guys, if you wanna do that, or if you just wanna discuss and which direction you wanna go.
We did mention this briefly this morning at HADF, that we were, that this was coming, so, that they were aware, and I don't know, Amy, if you've had conversation with the Chamber at all about this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I assume you had, so. Do we wanna have one, two, all of them come and give us a pitch? What's the council's feel on this?
Is there any recommendations out of either of those groups?
Not yet, I don't know if they've seen that, Chamber.
They haven't seen this.
Have not seen this.
Mm-mm.
They've just been told we're planning.
Individually, I can tell you, they both like their logos, 'cause they just redid them.
Right.
A few years back, but they're willing to look at a rebranding to be more cohesive.
Right.
Their logos are kind of, they've got similar colors and whatnot, we're kind of the oddball. They're kind of playing off each other right now. Right.
I don't know that we're ready to make a decision tonight, do we wanna have, I'll say again, do we wanna have them come in and give us a presentation, do we wanna mull this for a while, what do we wanna do?
Oh, I don't need a presentation, personally.
Okay.
Thank you for the comments, we are.
Well, I mean, who's gonna be meeting with them and giving feedback and trying to make guidance, is it the council, is it the HADF, to reform a uh, not study, but.
Subcommittee?
Yeah, I'd hate to say that, but, I mean.
I, I, I just think that's kind of what you would do, you'd kind of take some.
Yeah.
Few people from the council, a couple people from the Chamber, a couple from the HADF, um, pretty good for looking at all three logos, maybe get that, maybe, maybe get some input, I mean, people that aren't part of those organizations, but.
Well, and Arden, could this fit with that new master plan group?
It may, we may wanna talk about it, but I would say, uh, what we should do, Amy, is, uh, between you and me, maybe the, we should get a couple from, maybe one or two from Chamber, one or two from HADF, you, me, and maybe Teresa, and maybe one other council member if they'd like, and we'll sit down and go through, really scour the three and then see what we wanna do.
Okay.
Should we do that?
I mean, ultimately, if a logo design, um, is suggested for, you know, the new one for the city, it'll have to be a full board approval.
Right, yeah, we understand.
Henkin Schultz did two calls to learn, or did Craig?
Yeah, I've never done that.
Seems like they kind of have a niche.
Is that? Henkin Schultz, um, was that the, I, I did ask Teresa what her thoughts was, and that was the one that she did mention, so.
For example, do we say all, have to use that versus the rest of them?
And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Kirby Schultz worked a long time at Lawrence and Schiller, am I correct?
No, he's been at Henkin and Schultz forever, he.
Who's the guy that worked at?
Henkin and, or, Kirby Schultz was part owner of Henkin and Schultz, and then, um, Scott Lawrence has been at Lawrence and Schiller forever.
Somebody that was happy once.
Not as long as I've known him.
Okay, so, council, are I with that? We'll move it forward, we'll get a group together, look at these and.
Look, so that group will look at these proposals of this type, so, okay.
We'll see if we can get a recommendation, come back to council, is that all right? Is that everybody?
Get some people on there that are organizations as well.
Yeah.
Right, get some independents.
State, we're just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I know, I see that.
A little biased then?
Little biased then. I got some, I got some of that DSU swag hanging in my closet, I'll bet, so. All right, we have three mayoral, mayoral proclamations that I'd like to make, uh, first one is Arbor Day, we've been an Arbor Day city for, man, a long time, haven't we?
Third years.
Third years. Do I need council approval to approve these, our gifts, we're gonna, we're gonna make a, make a proclamation.
You're literally gonna make the proclamation.
April twenty-ninth is Arbor Day, and we're gonna celebrate that in Hartford. Congratulations to Craig and his group for everything they do on People and Trees planet. Second one is Silver Star Banner Day, which, do we have a date? Yeah, May first, May first is Silver Star Banner Day in Hartford, we will declare that and proclaim as such.
Forgive me, I've never seen proclamations that like this before. Harvey and the mayor is, uh, reading the entire proclamation, but you're, you're, you're out of Schultz.
Third one is Building Safety Month Proclamation, which is the month of May two thousand twenty-two. We will proclaim that May is Building Safety Month in Hartford. All right? Will we sign them up? I assume they're in the file here somewhere or anything?
Yes, yes.
Got that? Uh, any reason for executive session tonight?
I don't have any tonight.
Okay, I call for a motion to adjourn. Second, anybody got a second? O'Hara? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you all.